Okay, we'll move on to Communications Petitions to Item Letter B. Hillsdale County Commissioner update. Commissioner Ambles.
Thank you Mayor, Council, City Manager. At our next Board of Commissioners meeting, we will authorize a material management planning notice of intent. This will mean that we are writing our plan locally, rather than having the state of Michigan write Hillsdale County's material management plan. It's quite an involved process. The deadlines are coming quickly. On by statute, what we need to do to accomplish our material management plan. And our next item on our to-do list is the notice of intent. And so we will do that at our next meeting. In addition, we will have discussion on roadwork in Lewis Emory Park. We're hoping to overlay eight roads in that park. And that's my information for today.
Any questions for Doug?
Emory Park? Yes. Something in the commission would improve those waters after.
Yes.
I mean, if you thought, look at it, it's very, very long.
If there's been conversation with Doug.
Yeah, talk to him, I'll never get any results. And it was really promising to go away. Yeah, and there's big road, you can have big black hole. Somebody got to look at that.
Yes.
Is, is any committee going to, you, you all have four years now in this current term, right? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I guess you haven't been...
November.
Re-elected technically. Is anyone going to be taking charge of the active warrant issue? Are you going to look into using branch, leneway, jail space? Or are you considering any options there?
Sheriff is looking into that on a regular basis. Conversations that I'm aware of is it's very expensive to outsource the jail space. And it's cost repetitive. Who's going to pay for it? It's very difficult. The plan of what to do is ongoing discussion and trying to find correct, good answers. So when you ask, is anything happening? Yes, the answer is yes. What is going to happen is to be determined.
Any more questions for Doug? Thank you Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move into Communication Petitions, Item Letter C, which was these two pictures in Mrs. Stock's apartment of what appears to be a tent. Did you, uh...
Thank you Mayor, yeah, so I just wanted to bring to the council's attention and to our city police and fire that we had a guest stay the night at the gazebo in Mrs. Stock's Park. I usually check the gazebo every night at ten. And I haven't been doing it, I guess, the last week or so. And when I woke up Sunday morning, this man was there. And so I immediately called the police, I believe Officer Pratt responded. And the second, or the picture that's on top is the man clearing his tent out. The first one is where it was all closed up. And you can see him kind of in the trees there on the left under the gazebo. But my big point was just to keep it in the council's attention. The, uh, the park gazebo is being utilized quite frequently again this summer by people who stay from open to close. And more so than last year. And this because of the ordinance we passed that was spoken about. I just want to make sure that the ordinance is enforced. And I wanted to encourage the police department to use the gate and patrol the park every night. I would appreciate that, and my neighbors would appreciate that. One of them is here because of the man stealing the night there. I don't, I think if we don't pay attention to it and keep it in our, of our thought in the public mind, it will grow. Especially with the challenges that were alluded to during the public comments at Hillsdale Thrift. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
In addition to that, um, you know, we've been very... Let's just say, say we've been turning a blind eye to our own ordinances with what's happening at Hillsdale Thrift. Because technically, there is an ordinance against camping, a permit camping on, on property in the city, even on private property. So, you know, I could put up a tent in my backyard for my kids to enjoy the night, but they couldn't live out there. So in the tent, according to that. Mr. Mackey, could you bring that to the next meeting? That ordinance. And then, um, so, you know, if, if what's happening at Hillsdale Thrift does fail and ends in those, we've got to be ahead of the game and just have an idea of what, how we're going to respond. And maybe hold institutions like Lifeways who has a nine-figure budget, you know, more accountable. Maybe the commissioners could consider that down the 27th, to talk about it some more, so that it doesn't become a problem that spirals into something that is more difficult to control.
Thank you Councilman Soha. Any more comments regarding this item? Councilman Palladino?
Uh, on the, on the issue of the shelter, I was reading the eighteen fifty-three Michigan Constitution, eighteen fifty Michigan Constitution. The first powers given to the county board of supervisors at that point was the authority to purchase land to build a poorhouse. I think we should take this to the county commission, simply because our taxing powers are maxed out. The county commissioners could raise more money, refine more money in their budget. And this is a county-wide issue. I'm not saying the shit, city should have no role in this, but I think that is the, the proper place to turn for that authority.
Thank you Councilman Palladino. Any more discussion on this item? Okay. We'll move on to the packet. We've gotten our introduction, adoption of ordinances, public hearing. We've gotten the whole business, we'll move into new business, Item A, Airport Asphalt Project. Dave?
Thank you Mayor. As you indicated, this is a, a capping project at the airport that was or is in the budget for this fiscal, fiscal year. We did get three quotes for this work and the, our recommending RDK, the vote, uh, the award at the bid. There, uh, there was a little nuance between them and the next bidder up. Actually, RDK is giving, are providing more asphalt than the other bidder for just a slight amount more price. I had Jason Blake review the bids to look at the depth in the asphalt content. And he agreed and he's recommending with me that we award this work to RDK asphalt and seal coating, twenty-five thousand four hundred. I believe there is a map in there showing what that work is.
Thank you Mayor. Any questions regarding this item? Councilman Soha?
Are, are there two separate overlays here? Or do you only understand the blue and the yellow different areas in the twenty-four? The twenty-five-four and the twenty-four-six?
Yes, we are only doing the, uh, the first one, which is the twenty-five-four. And I, um, we're not doing the other. It's not a budget information.
Any more questions for Dave? Do I have a motion to, uh...
Subtle.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soha, to award the airport's asphalt work to RDK's asphalt and seal coating in the amount of twenty-five thousand four hundred dollars. Can I have a roll call, city clerk?
Councilperson Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuschel?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Woolfra?
Yes.
Mayor Sacher?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Palladino?
No.
Ian Pratt?
Yes.
Is A1 approved?
Thank you Katie. We will move on to new business, Item Letter B, Dow Hotel Expansion Development Agreement. Dave, yeah?
Uh, yeah, I need our city council's advice on this matter. I no longer work for the college. I retired nine years ago, so I no longer receive a regular salary at the college. You don't get, retirees, uh, professors don't get pensions from the college. So the college can get what amounts to a 401K. It's not that, it's similar. So the college no longer contributes anything to that retirement fund. And it doesn't manage the retirement fund. However, I may have a, a reason for recusal if, because I do receive an income from the college in terms of lecture fees. We have, I participate in three summer lecture programs at the college. So my question is, should I recuse myself from this matter?
Under the statute of government's contracts between public servants and, um, private entities, the only exclusion is for someone who is an employee or an officer of the, um, of the entity in this case, that, that, the contractor would be with.
So a line employee, if I take the lecture fees from the college?
It depends. Do they take withholding from your...
Excuse me?
Do they take withholding from your pay? Are you an independent contractor, meaning you have...
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't discuss that stuff.
Yeah, so that would be the distinction, whether or not you're an independent contractor or you're an employee. My assumption would be if you appear three times, um, a year and you give lectures, how many lectures do you give?
Two lectures. Uh, I, well, there are three programs. One is in May, one is in July, one is in August. And in those, in those lectures, I give four in one and six in the upper two.
And who do you give the lectures to?
They're, they're, uh, people who come into the college to get, to receive the lectures. They're not like, they're not students.
Not students?
No.
My assumption is, is that you would be considered to be an independent contractor, not an employee of the college for those purposes. If you're retired, you don't work there regularly, and you come because you're asked to give a couple of, um, lectures a year to people from outside, um, I would say you probably are under the statute of not considered to be an employee or an officer of the college, and hence you would be able to vote.
Okay, so I'm an independent contractor, an employee, so...
That's what it sounds like to me.
Satisfied, Councilman Morrissey?
Yeah, but that's what I, I didn't know the answer, but I didn't know the answer. But I do appreciate the memo you gave us in January on the subject. It allowed me to ask the right question.
Thank you Tom. All right, uh, let's move on here. Dave?
Uh, thank you Mayor. We do have representatives from the college that are going to give a brief presentation about this project, talk about the project, what it consists of, and the impact that they've found through their studies, that it will have on the community. Um, I, in my summary, I put just some highlights. They're looking at construction, a hundred and fifty-eight room hotel, conference center, dining facility north of, um, the main campus, north of the Dow Center. The project would require a vacation of a block of East Galloway Drive, a small portion of Summit Street. In consideration for this, the city would receive three hundred thousand, aid in one hundred thousand increments and one point seven million, a one point seven million dollar endowment set up at the community foundation for essential city services. I would envision that council would set what essential city services mean. And then, and I referred you to the section that Jackie Plaine referred to earlier. The Community Development Committee, uh, of the city council was recommending the full city council, uh, review and approve the draft agreement. With that, I'll ask the college representatives, I believe Matt or Tim, to come up and kind of give us a, a brief overview.
Hello. Uh, my name is Matt Hazelton. Uh, I'm speaking kind of on behalf of the operations team that's planning on running the hotel. Um, I just wanted to kind of speak high level as to the summary of the economic impact study we had conducted last fall. Um, this will be very repetitive for members of the Community Development Committee, but I figured it would be helpful for the full council here as well. Um, so with, uh, the help of an outside, um, economic firm, we conducted an economic impact study last fall. And we found, um, between the one-time construction impact and the ongoing, uh, impacts from additional visitors to the city, an estimated fifty-six million dollars in one-time economic impacts to the region through the construction of the hotel. Again, we spoke to the, uh, committee about the college's commitment to keeping as much of that, um, construction work local and local, uh, construction firms. We shared some letters of support, um, for, from some of those local firms. Um, the construction phase will create an estimated, uh, three hundred and seventy-four jobs for that eighteen to twenty-four month span. And then obviously the question that we're all asking, uh, long-term is the, what will the impact be going forward? Um, so we estimate that the, um, additional traffic from the hotel will generate approximately two point six million dollars in annual visitor spending for the greater Hillsdale area as part of a, um, complete sixteen million dollars in annual economic impact, including over nine and a half million in new money. Um, what we mean by that new money is not only will the, the hotel be generating additional visitors in line with, um, what she was talking about, the airport, but it'll also be bringing back revenue from Coldwater and Jackson and other surrounding areas where our visitors have been staying for hotel rooms, dining, et cetera. Um, it will create approximately eighty positions, um, at the hotel. Um, in addition, uh, the company estimated it'll contribute to additional twenty-two positions at various businesses in the area and generate, uh, over twelve million dollars in, uh, state revenue, state taxes as well. I think that's all I had as far as the economic impact. Tim is going to speak on the agreement.
Good evening. So you should have the development agreement in front of you. It was the same, uh, format that, um, was, was presented with Meyer. And, uh, the last several months, Dave and I have worked on, um, the components there. And Dave kind of taken the lead in terms of the format that the city had used for the agreement with Meyer. Um, the main core, if we were to kind of boil it down, is the, uh, the vacating and privatizing of that East Galloway Drive segment where, uh, that's adjacent to the chapel and adjacent to, to the current Dow Center, as well as a, a portion of Summit, uh, going up Summit Drive from south to north, only to extend up to what, uh, the college owns, uh, on the west, on the west side of Summit Street. Uh, in conjunction with that, as, uh, Mr. Mackey stated, it would include a one point seven million dollar contribution for an endowment towards the, uh, to be housed at the Hillsdale Community Foundation, to be utilized for essential city services. Um, in addition to that, three, uh, one hundred thousand dollar payments made to the city, commencing, uh, no more than ninety days following the, the finalization of the, the vacation of the road and the easement there, with, uh, two subsequent hundred thousand dollar payments paid at the beginning of, of July of twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, should everything, uh, everything pass through. So, um, I can answer any other questions that I know. It's still in the conceptual phase. Uh, there's no, there isn't much prudence to go much, much further than what might fit and what might work, uh, until, until we kind of know what, uh, what path we might be able to go down, so.
Yes, I, I have a couple of things. One is just a procedural thing for us. The, uh, recommendation here on this first, uh, memo that, uh, city manager Mackey, uh, gave us, yeah, says, "Discuss and consider approving the attached development agreement." And then the next one, the next memo says, uh, "We have a public hearing on it at our next meeting." It seems to me that it would be a very good idea to discuss it at this meeting, but I don't think we should have a vote on it until after the public hearing. Uh, makes no sense to do it that way. Uh, but Councilman, uh, City, City Council, uh, Attorney has another idea, so let's see what that is.
So there are two separate things on your agenda. One of them is the discussion and approval of the development agreement itself that does not require a public hearing to approve the agreement. The second one is assuming that the agreement is approved. If it's approved, and you would move forward with vacating, um, the portion of, of Galloway Drive that's referenced and, which is between Hillsdale Street and Northwest Street. And then also vacating that small section of Summit Street. That gets introduced at this hearing pursuant to the provisions of the city charter. And then you set the hearing for the next meeting after the resolution is introduced. That is where you have the public hearing before you would vote on the vacation piece. But the first thing that's before you right now is to discuss the development agreement itself. The second one doesn't matter if the development agreement isn't approved.
Okay, I get it. Uh, now, I do have questions for, uh, Mr. Wells. It says there's going to be two point six, this impact data source, which was the, uh, uh, organization that gave you the projections about the, or estimates about what the financial impact would be. Uh, says two point six million, I believe, for annual off-site visitor spending, retail and dining. What was the basis of that estimate?
Basis of that is just historical data that the, that the Dow Center has, uh, has collected over the last several years in terms of overall nights of stay, nights where they are full, nights where they know that, uh, they have folks who may be on a waitlist who are staying in, in the greater Hillsdale community. Uh, and when you overlay that with, uh, national hospitality trends, which I believe the number is for every night of stay, on average, the occupants spends, or the guests spend about fifty-eight dollars in the surrounding community, be that in retail or hospitality. Uh, we know that there are some pretty good numbers for what, what Hillsdale, what the Dow Center and Hillsdale sheds to, uh, places like Coldwater and Jackson when, when the college has, has events where there have a large, large draw up of, of attendees.
Now, if, if we could, I'd like more detail on that at some point as soon because, I mean, it seems to me that the obvious reason to have a hotel and connect it to the Searl Center is to keep people on site. Uh, you have the, you'll have the hotel dining area, and you'll also have the Searl Center dining area, which accommodates upwards of eight hundred people. So there's going to be plenty of dining going on right within the college. And it seems to me that the ra, very rationale of having a hotel is to concentrate people on the college campus. And I just want to know, I'm not saying that I'm right about that. I'm just saying that I want to see a little bit more in terms of, of statistics to back up this claim of two point six.
Sure. I mean, that's certainly true to a degree. I think one of the things that the college has seen in the last couple of years is growth on the event side that is not specifically related to, to campus and college events with the, uh, the investment that's been made at the Johnny Anthony Halter Center. We have a plethora of USA Shooting events and activities that are happening out there. We have a large event actually happening in, in the month of September, where hundreds of participants are coming with their families. Uh, this wasn't an event that took place last year, but I believe it was in June or July. And so it's actually happening in, in the fall during the academic year. And all those folks are, are going to be staying in the, in the community, and they're not coming specifically.
I just want to see, you know, a little bit more rash, real, you know, real numbers rather than simply the assertion that this is the case.
You got something?
Yeah. That would be useful.
Just to create a little additional detail to that. Um, for what it's worth, the current Dow, uh, hosts about nine, ninety-five hundred guests a year. Uh, and Tim, as Tim mentioned, we track about an additional nine to ten thousand that do end up going to Jackson or Coldwater or the surrounding area. Um, of those other, uh, if you look at the numbers of the new hotel, kind of total occupancy, that nine and ten thousand combines to about nineteen, twenty thousand, which is only about thirty to forty percent, uh, of the total occupancy. Um, so I would say there's a, as Tim alluded to, part of the reason for the hotel is also the creation of other kinds of events that do drop.
Put it right, and put all that stuff to writing, and, you know, get the data from this data resource people, so that we can actually see their reasoning behind it. That's what I, that's all I'm interested in, that.
Sure, yeah.
Um, now, the state revenues, twelve million, that's from what, hotel tax, room tax? What is that?
Simply the, the occupancy.
Room tax, okay. And, uh, I'd like to know a little bit more about this Hillsdale, uh, Foundation Agency, the one point seven million endowment, uh, namely, uh, who's going to, is the, who's going to make the decisions with respect to where that goes? Is it going to the councils, will it be the Hillsdale Foundation? Who's gonna, who's going to be in control of that money that the, that the, uh, that the, uh, the college will be giving to that agency?
Well, it's intended to, to go to the community foundation for, the community foundation's ability to invest it in the endowment model, so that that would be kicking off an amount of money every year annually that would come to the council's discretion to be able...
It would be an under our discretion.
Whatever, the, whatever, the proceeds of that would be...
Right, oh, I understand, we're not going to touch the capital.
For, for, for essential city services, so that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Tim. Um, completion date, we spent on twenty-seven or twenty-eight? If things go the great way.
So, uh, I, I would, I would think it would be at least a thirty to thirty-six a month project to do and do it the right way. Um, this is kind of phase one of what would be required as if, if we are partnering with the city in vacating the, the roads necessary in the, in the easements. Then I believe the next step, and I would refer to Mr. Thompson, but the next step is we have to get this, uh, approved by, by the court. Uh, and I don't have a timeline in terms of how, how long or short that might take. Uh, but if that's the case, then we would start the architectural firms on the design drawings, and that is approximately six to nine months. Um, but that would also leave time for the agreement for, uh, the necessary infrastructural improvement that's necessary for the utilities to take place. And that happens at the city's direction and discretion. Um, however, there are no, there are no city funds that are utilized for the necessary, uh, utility improvements and alterations. That all comes, uh, is directly paid by the college. Um, and then construction would be able to commence after that.
Okay, uh, I think it's a needed thing, it is. Uh, just worried about, hopefully we'll get some more growth and more restaurants in this town because we want people not only just to eat up there, we'd like to have them come downtown and go off to the center of the shooting center. That's, I go out there quite frequently, and it's nice out there. I see the growth and expansion that's going on out there, so I know what you're talking about. Um, everything I see, it looks good, and I think it's a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think this sets a really positive precedent, so appreciate it. Councilman Soha?
Hi Tim, thanks for coming out, appreciate you. Um, just two questions. Is this, um, going to be considered a part of the college's mission for education? Or will it be on the tax roll?
It is considered a mission component.
Okay. And then, um, I figured that, I just was curious. Um, then the second question is, oh, are you going to have a, a restaurant? A sit-down restaurant that's outside of, uh...
Sure, yeah, so the, the, right now, the hotel is comprised, as Matt mentioned, of, of, still settling on the final number, but they have respected out a hundred and fifty-five to a hundred and fifty-eight, uh, rooms. It would include a, a, a fine dining restaurant. It would also include additional ballrooms. Uh, one of the things that we've seen growth of, you know, at the college is the desire to have it as a host site for weddings. And so I know there are several weddings that take place there, you know, every year. And, um, in addition to, you know, corporate Christmas parties and other, other events of that nature. So it would provide additional, um, hospitality space for, for things, things like that as well, so.
Councilonstitutional?
Uh, a couple of questions. One, everybody wants a win-win, it sounds good. Uh, they're definitely marketing to their needs, and you're going to have a captive audience. There's not a whole lot of need to leave the hill and come downtown. You're going to have everything you pretty much need there. My question is kind of a legal one in a sense. Is it, are we, can we waive property taxes and, and take an endowment? So the next person coming to town, I'm going to build this beautiful home, and I'll give you, you know, one, once and all payment, and I'll be done.
home, and I'll give you a, you know, one, once and all payment, and I'll be done? And no property taxes? And if what happens if, you know, this foundation doesn't work, you know, we, we lose this revenue ten, fifteen, twenty years from now? You know what I mean? Is it, is it legal to barter with property taxes for another payment? That's my first question.
Tom, will you address that?
Yes, we're not bartering for property taxes. There would be no property taxes because as Mr. Wells just indicated, if it's part of the mission of the college, it is exempt from property taxes.
I wanna add to that, because we've had, you know, in good faith, we've had townhouses built that were not gonna go to the college. We had a building downtown Hillsdale, part of Tiffa, that wasn't gonna go to the college, and then we've lost those tax revenues. I mean, the only difference here is they're being honest upfront that they're not gonna put it on the tax.
Well, yes, but if they were to build something else on the property that they own, that's part of their mission, this isn't them acquiring something, for the most part, that is already on the tax.
Other than Galloway Drive.
Galloway Drive is not taxed.
No, I realize that.
Just, just so we understand, this is not a sale of property to the college. Galloway Drive and Summit Street are platted rights of way. So in their plat, what happens is if I plant a piece of property, which is I have this big chunk of property, I wanna subdivide it so I can sell off lots to people. As part of getting my plat approved, and in the case of the two plats at issue here, what they did is when they established the plats, they dedicate streets to the use of the public. You can dedicate them only to the use of the individuals in the plat if you want to, in which case they're private streets or private drives. Here, way back when they did the uh, the Black Mar Bee Bee Edition, the E. Martindale Edition, which are the two plats that are involved, they dedicated Galloway Drive, which I think was called Mechanics Street in the plat, and Summit Street um, to the use of the public. When they're dedicated to the use of the public, the municipal entity that has jurisdiction there can either affirmably accept them, or if they don't say, no, we don't wanna take responsibility for them, after a period of time, they become deemed to be accepted by the entity. So, in this case, those two streets were accepted for public use by the city of Hillsdale. Back then it was Village. And when you accept them on behalf of the public, they become public rights of way. They are not owned by municipality, the property is not owned by the city. The, the city has a right of way to use those, and the members of the public have the right of way to use those. Uh, but the cost to maintain them, when you accept them, becomes the municipality's. So, what happens is, when you vacate the street, you are in effect saying, okay, well, we accepted that dedication for use for the public, also accepting the responsibility to maintain it. When we vacate that, we are saying, we're giving those rights to the public to use that back, but we're also giving up any obligation we have to maintain it. So, that's what the vacation process is. And it doesn't mean, however, that the people who own property in those plats lose their rights to the use of that area. They still have an individual easement with respect to that, which is what, um, Mr. Wells referenced, a court action. The only way that you can cut those off is by asking the circuit court to amend the plat to basically get rid of those, and there's a procedure that you go through to do that. So that's if you read in the development agreement, the part where it says that the city, one, would vacate the public's rights, which allows then the college to ask the court to amend the plat so that those streets wouldn't show up anymore. And in that process, all of the property owners get joined. And, and the development agreement provides simply that the city would be agreeing, well, since we vacated it, we're not going to oppose that, that's gonna be to, between the college and, and the court and any of the folks that have property in the plat that would be affected by the vacation. I, I hope that answers your question.
Just in layman's terms for the public, nothing's coming off the tax rules.
Nothing is coming off the tax rules.
I, I was on the community uh, committee on this. Um, I really think it's a win-win for both, for the college and Hillsdale. If you actually look at the properties that the college has purchased, talking about tax rules and taking them off the tax rules, and then they basically, what they do is they tear them down, and they either use them for some classrooms if they can, but if they can't, then they have an empty lot, and they pay tax on that empty lot if it's actually not contributing to their mission statement. In this case, with us vacating Galloway Drive and Summit, a portion of Summit, the, the amount of taxes that the city is out of from all the purchases college for the most part in recent years, uh, I got from the city assessor, roughly, uh, works out to about seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. With this agreement, the city's given up, I'm gonna say about a tenth of the streets that they own, that they're having issues with maintaining, and that's why we're doing the SADs. And the college is creating a one point seven million dollar endowment, community, community foundation, with a hundred thousand payments for three years, and the, the purpose is to let that one point seven, hopefully at five percent, would grow to two million after the three-year span is up. That would roughly generate uh, very possibly a hundred thousand a year. So it, it's kind of replacing a lot of the taxes the city's lost out on with the college, this being a good neighbor. It basically really quiets those in the community because of the divide a lot of the locals with the college have, that, well, they don't pay their fair share. But they can actually say now going forward, that, yeah, well, yeah, we do, you know, we have an endowment that actually is contributing possibly a hundred thousand, and my whole intention on that endowment would be that it would get larger and larger and larger. And which would help a lot of the def- you know, the, the problems we have in addressing these issues. And again, it's, it's up to the future councils to decide how that essential services fee, you know, money should be spent. But I, but I think it's a, it's a really win-win and, and uh, the, the college can basically say, hey, you know, you know, we're contributing to the, the city and the functions of, that they've, you know, provide. So I really can't see anything wrong with this. I think going forward, uh, it's, it's being a good neighbor, and the college, I think, is returning that favor on the endowment, so I'm all supportive of it.
Counsel, what's up?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Veer, I just wanted to express, and I meant to do this earlier, but my gratitude to the college for establishing an endowment. My, one of my fears though is that, how is it, will it be established as an irrevocable trust, or something that future councils can't dig into that principle and whittle it down so that it becomes nothing? Um, is it, I, I mean, we don't have to determine that tonight, but that's definitely something that I would appreciate, and as a council that determined, would we, are we, would we be the beneficiaries that determine exactly how it's set up? Or is that the college's discretion because they're the providers of the endowment? Could you help me understand that?
I, I don't know what the intent is, 'cause I was involved in negotiating it, but um, from a legal standpoint, it would depend upon what the agreement with the community foundation would take. It would be so when you place funds, I know from being on the school board in Jonesville, we placed money that we received from a, a, a trust that had been giving money out every year to the school district, um, decided that they wanted to terminate the trust, so they gave all of some. The money was placed with the community foundation. You define in the agreement with the community foundation the circumstances under which it can be drawn on, there are limitations to that. Um, so presumably that would be part of the discussion between the city and the college as to um, how that would be provided for, as to whether or not there would be restrictions on the city's ability to access the principal, or if um, the city wanted to be able to have that, if it had to.
Thank you for that, Tim. And then the three hundred thousand, the three hundred thousand dollar payments, those are going to be deposited to increase the fund, that's the, or the endowment, was that the intention there?
To allow the endowment to gain interest.
The, the three one hundred thousand dollar payments on an annual basis would go directly into the city funds. Okay, the one point seven is gonna sit for three years. So, assuming a five percent return, that would generate, get it up to close to two million. And then in the fourth year, that would be where, and I would think this council could decide that, as far as, you know, say, okay, going forward in that fourth year, we're, as a council, uh, you, you're only allowed to take, say, a four percent out of that fund. But the whole pur- purpose of that endowment was that it would be forever, and that you'd only be really accessing the, the interest that would, are the gains from such.
And that's what the three hundred thousand, the three years of the hundred thousand is to allow the endowment to build the interest?
Yeah.
And to make up for those, then after that three years, then it would be essentially the hundred thousand uh, ca- continuation of it in perpetuity.
And we're not determining that here tonight. We, but would we give the city direction, or is that the city manager and his team's responsibility to determine um, it's your, what, which?
It's, it's council.
It's us, okay.
Councilman Morrison, sorry?
Yeah, uh, Councilman Veer mentioned the maintenance of the streets, and so I wanna make a general comment about that neighborhood. Uh, the, I've heard it alleged that the best streets in Hillsdale City are those that surround the college. That is a falsehood. Um, the worst streets in War Two, which Councilwoman Pratt and I represent, are almost all of them within six hundred yards of the college campus, and I can name them. There's one, Fairview is across, is on the other side of ninety-nine, that's in poor condition. The rest of them, and I'll name them for you. There's West Fayette between West and Hillsdale Street. There's West Street between West Fayette and College Street. There's McClellan Street, there's Park Street, there's Summit Street. Davidson Street is in deplorable condition. And the uh, uh, that Galloway between West and Wastewater Treatment Plant is a gravel road where those big trucks kick up du- a cloud of dust every time they go through, and there are residences on those streets. Those are not, some of those places are owned by the college, to be sure, but some, there are real people living on those streets, and they do not have adequate streets in that area. So, um, I uh, wanna make that very clear because there's been a lot of talk in this town about uh, the condition of the streets around the college, and I think some consideration needs to be given to the residents in that area uh, with respect to improving their streets. Thank you.
You're absolutely right, and as a matter of fact, Dave can attest to this, we've gone out of our way to not make it appear that we're fixing streets up around the college only, so.
Sure. I think it was a few years back, they uh, college had to pave, uh, pave Hillsdale Street, I believe it was?
It was West Street?
West Street? Yeah, they, they came right up and helped pay for it, so they have contributed. It'd just be nice if they contributed a little more, and they will, this is a good thing, so I don't see a problem with it. I mean, Summit, there are Galloways, that street you're talking about, everything there is college-connected anyway, between West and Hillsdale Street. Everything there is owned by the college. So we're not, we're just vacating it, but it's still gonna be there, we're just, it's, it's no brainer really, it really is, and what you've come to us is a fair offer, and I, I appreciate it.
It is, it's a super positive thing, I think, and I think it sets a really good precedent, and uh, and I think in, you know, years down the line, we're all gonna look back at this as something really positive that happened for the whole community. Councilman Paul.
There was a comment earlier, I think it was about total occupancy, about the twenty thousand projected occupants, the, a number was thrown around thirty to forty percent, what was that number?
Yeah, so like Tim mentioned, it's current uh, drawings point to a hundred and fifty-eight room hotel, which I believe at a hundred percent occupancy is fifty-eight thousand rooms in a calendar year. So the twenty thousand is the uh, kind of the known, based on current demand, that's the known uh, demand, and that thirty thousand, thirty-eight thousand is the current gap, so.
Thirty-eight, okay, so does it fill, so it's not close to filling all known demand?
Um, no.
Or it's exceeding?
It's, no.
By thirty-eight thousand?
It's significantly from the college, uh, the known demand currently, yes, it's bigger than.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
Um, I, the question that, how does this affect the Kiefer House? Have you discussed with their team?
Yeah, that was actually one of the first things we did, um, back when we were envisioning this. I had a conversation with one of the representatives from, uh, the company, uh, in twenty eighteen, I believe in August, and they actually projected that their demand uh, between the project with the Kiefer and the Don would create a net positive, they would exceed the capacity of the Kiefer. Um, and they were coming to us, uh, kind of with a plan for how to put their extra people in the Dow, uh, which is one of the things I would encourage us to continue to pursue this, um, because in addition to far exceeding the college's own demand, they suggested that the, the college, that they would contribute to additional demand as well, so.
Okay, it sounds like, sorry, it sounds like what we're hearing is that there's gonna be far more rooms available that are necessary.
There are far more rooms than are necessary from the existing demand. So as Tim alluded to, um, Halter, or the Halter Shooting Sports has, has grown exponentially over the last five years, so we've only been tracking these numbers for three or four years.
So you were projecting additional growth, additional events at the college to fill those thirty-eight thousand?
There's additional growth that's already happening, yes. It's building room to grow, I think to answer your question broadly.
Okay, great, thank you, yep. Um, the annual state tax revenue, what, what did you say that was?
It was twelve million over ten years.
Twelve, so one point two million, okay.
To talk, to talk to your point that Mr. Sutu, you mentioned this too about the restaurants, one of the things that we've seen, um, the last couple of years is not that the college is doing so many things back to back, but we're actually doing, or having requests to do things like almost on top of each other at the same time.
Yes, definitely.
And one of the, one of the things that was new this year is the representatives from the American Legion, they reached out to, to me about a year ago, and um, they had said, we, we don't have, right now, we don't have a, a future home for the American Legion's National Rhetorical Competition, where they bring in all the state winners and they give their, give their speeches and their families and whatnot, and so for the better part of, oh, eight months, we worked on with their, with their staff, we brought them up, you know, on multiple occasions to tour the campus. Normally they're in big convention centers, and um, they, they thought this would be a great place that teaches the Constitution and, and loves that, and that's the theme that their organization, you know, is, is all about and has, and so we were able to, to, to host them, you know, on, on campus, and they, they were not charged, you know, for, for that. Um, but in, in conjunction with that, there was only one, and if I remember correctly, it was back in the day, there was only one official meal event. I think we may have, you know, had some, some lunches, it was only one, one, one time. So, um, the vast majority, because they're all high schoolers, are coming with, with, with parents and, and friends and family, um, and may have had other opportunity, we actually were able to host, uh, their request, their, um, their air rifle championships in, in the Birbin Center, uh, just last month. And um, I think they were welcome to eat in the cafeteria if it's open, it's not open all summer, it's open when we have large, large groups, and they're welcome to, to do that, but outside of that, their, their, their things were on their, kind of on their own. Um, with the, with the completion of, of Hayton Park, uh, we're seeing a whole lot more, we're, we're host for the Great Midwest Athletic Conferences, you know, across country, and the conferences bringing their, their teams, you know, here to stay, and I, in former life, uh, you know, was the assistant, was basketball coach at the college a long time ago, and, and we would travel, um, we're, we're staying in a hotel that's hopefully close to, you know, close to the, the game site, but we were going somewhere to eat all the time, and I don't, I don't know that we're gonna be, that the restaurant is gonna be competing for, for a lot of the team, the team, your team travel. Um, but I guess, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of things simultaneously, you know, and we're finding it, even just to be able to have, uh, the, the benefit of the growth that we've seen over the last couple of years, you know, it was. you know, it was, it was an honor to get the call from Shay Dow, who called, you know, one of the gentlemen who works for me, to say, I think we've outgrown the AG church, you know, is there any way we could, we could move Officer Butler's, you know, funeral over to you guys? And we said, just tell us when. And for the better part of three days, we put everybody to work, you know, to, to do that. When it was trying to do, do, do right by the family and the sheriff's department for hospitality, for food before and after. We did that and plaster and our AV teams were doing overflow in, in there. And our marketing guys had a video. And it was an honor to do it. And to have a place where we can do that, it was, it was great. And so to be able to, be able to grow the facilities, it's truly, you know, it's not, um, anyway, I think, I think there's broad, there's broad benefit for those that want to come and use it, you know, all the time. So. I, I'm sorry, John. Mr. Palladino, you had a question about a number.
Oh, the annual state revenue, I think you answered that. Uh, twelve million over ten years, so one point two million a year. And then what's our projected endowment revenue, about a hundred thousand?
It would come in at one point seven million. And, you know, we've, we've tried to not assume anything, but let appropriate people know that this is potentially there. So no one is blindsided by the possibility of this. And then it's obviously at their, at their discretion. It's not the college's intention to control how that, how that, uh, is, is, is handled. But to make sure that they're aware that this would be coming to them for the purposes of, of an endowment model whereby the revenue that it generates would come to the city, you know, to assist in, um, the constant need for essential city services.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I would, I would like to see the strongest protections for this, um, uh, to, to remain in the future. Uh, was, was there any discussion in these negotiations about future properties being taken off the tax rules?
No, there was not.
Okay. Um, yeah, one, one further thing I would like to see, and, um, uh, I think this, this agreement is good, would be that specifically in the downtown, the, the college agree not to take any more properties off of the tax rule. Uh, I would like to see the whole city, but the, the downtown is really key. Um, or if they do, that we have some sort of agreement that maybe, as Greg said, we, uh, we have another one-time payment um, to contribute to this. Um, I do think that's such a good standard, but I just want to make sure that the city's interests are protected in the long term as well.
Thank you, Councilman Palladino.
I was glad to hear, uh, Councilman Palladino raise the issue of the, uh, relationship between the hotel proposal and the Kiefer House. Because for many years, and I'm grateful for the answer that we received, because for many years I've heard the claim that the only reason Tifa and the city generally were interested in rehabilitating the Dawn and the Kiefer House was to serve college interests. Um, well, I, as I pointed out to someone at one point, the, uh, the college already has a theater, so it doesn't need the Dawn Theater. And now we see that, as a matter of fact, the business plan of CL Enterprises has nothing to do with the college. And that the college, in fact, has had for a number of years evidently, the plan of having its own hotel. So the two are separate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morrissey. Councilman Stuccio.
Question for city manager. Uh, this model, could we use this if we brought in some businesses into town and allowed to industrial park? Instead of having to pay a property tax, they give us maybe five million dollars endowment type, I mean, something similar to this?
No, we can't, we cannot barter over the property taxes. But if we receive, uh, uh, a donation or funds, um, from a business or some other entity, it could go in this endowment. So this endowment.
I'm just talking, I'm talking, a brand new industry comes into town. Could you, could you use this type of model instead of a tax model, the endowment model, instead of a tax? Tom?
Uh, the answer is absolutely no. Property taxes are governed by the General Property Tax Act. There is no other way other than that and some other statutes that might act for certain things to generate revenue for the city.
So if it was a church, you could do it. I mean, the college can do this because they, their taxes aren't that way, right?
Yes, I mean, and, and part of the, you know, part of the, it's my understanding, anyway, that part of the reason for this is part of the negotiation was that by building this larger facility, the college puts more of a stress on the, uh, the city's ability to provide, as we've indicated, essential services, police, fire protection. In particular.
You missed the point, you missed the point.
Anybody could do it, Councilman Stuccio. You just couldn't do it, uh, in lieu of property taxes if you already have to pay property taxes. This is the alternative to the long time about paying the little taxes.
If a business comes in, they can make this type of an offer.
Yeah, anybody could leave us in the city of Hillsdale an endowment with the community foundation.
Yeah, but it would be, it would be a voluntary thing under most circumstances. The reason in this point in negotiation here is you indicated maybe for another nonprofit.
I mean, I mean, so they're not paying a property tax on these hotels.
Yes. Well, no, they aren't gonna pay a property tax on the hotels. If they built the hotel without this development agreement, they're not gonna pay property taxes on it most likely.
Yeah, I agree.
Pardon me?
So I got it. I got it. We're just about, I got it.
Councilman Palladino.
I think perhaps what Councilman Stuccio is getting at is that, uh, I don't know if this would be legal. We, we offer someone an Oprah, some sort of rehabilitation agreement. And for a, an amount that, you know, is far less than the, uh, tax receipts or tax savings from the Oprah, they pay some amount into the, uh, endowment fund. I don't know if that's some sort of illegal trading, but I think that would be the, the theory there.
Okay, that makes sense. This is to our benefit more than it's to the, this particular one is to our benefit more than the college's benefit. So this isn't, we're not making like a real deal with them, but.
I think it works both ways. My only goes benefits both of us in the long run. There is a need and we need to have this. And what you've come with is something, at least we get something this time. Instead of like the, um, call center, we just take it on the Tifa Road and stuff like that. We're getting something this time. And that's what I see.
Have you heard any complaints from the folks on Summit Street? Is it gonna come close to their property? Are they, are they concerned at all?
I have not specifically heard from anyone on Summit Street. And we're not asking for any vacating of a road or easement that would be adjacent to privately owned residences.
And in, in this next item, you would set a public hearing where they would have a, a, opportunity to come and speak to council if there was a concern. But as, as was stated by Tom and Tim, um, the college owns all the property that we're talking about va, uh, around the vacated, potentially vacated streets. So, um, we're not encouraging on that.
Councilman Beer.
Motion to approve your name.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Beer, seconded by Councilman Sharp to approve the attached development agreement of Hillsdale College regarding the Dow Hotel Expansion. And I have a roll call city clerk.
Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Woolfrow?
We're choose.
Mayor Stocker?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Palladino?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
And Sharp?
Yes.
Is it eight zero?
Thank you, Katie.